The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of August 23, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here. Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding the listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card for an item listed on the agenda from Michael Turnipseed.
Thank you. Go ahead and call that speaker. All right, let's... Oh, here he is. Mr. Turnipseed? Welcome.
Madam Mayor, it was the Council, Michael Turnipseed. I'm here to speak about the agenda item. I prepared, I printed it out, I tried to read it, and you print it in like one font. So I'm unable to comment. I have asked for permission to extend my mark, have any marks after we see the presentation where I can read it by the staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor Go, we've received several speaker cards on non-agenda items. The first public speaker, Emmett McCormick.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Emmett McCormick, and I am here on behalf of Kern Citizens for Energy to express our opposition to the City of Bakersfield's proposed Climate Action Plan. We believe this Climate Action Plan will not only have a negative impact on the economic vitality of the City of Bakersfield, but will also further jeopardize the oil and natural gas industry in Bakersfield. The oil and natural gas industry has been a cornerstone of Bakersfield's economy for decades and continues to provide thousands of good-paying jobs and many economic benefits to the city. This Climate Action Plan calls for 100% electrification, which threatens the oil and natural gas industry in Bakersfield and the livelihood of thousands of hard-working individuals that rely on it. In closing, we call on the City Council to recognize the vital role of the oil and natural gas industry in Bakersfield's economy. We firmly believe that the proposed Climate Action Plan threatens the livelihood of thousands of hard-working individuals in our community, and we strongly urge the council to remove this plan from consideration. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Next speaker, please.
Ron Nelms.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Ron Nelms. I'm a land surveyor by trade, but I am here to represent the... I'm chair of the Government Review Committee for the Bakersfield Chamber, and I would like to read in a letter that was sent to Mr. Clegg. "We collectively write to you today on behalf of a diverse coalition to express our preliminary concerns regarding the City of Bakersfield draft Climate Action Plan. Collectively, we represent hundreds of local employers who provide jobs for thousands of city residents. Our organizations stand united in requesting that the City of Bakersfield immediately eliminate the Climate Action Plan and focus on delivering a general plan that works for Bakersfield and doesn't tie our hands to speculative future requirements from the state of California. First, a cap is not required element of the general plan. City of Bakersfield and your planning staff are aware that the use of cap is not a legal requirement. As such, our organizations steadfastly believe that a general plan should not focus on items that go beyond what is legally required for the city to have a general plan. Along these same lines, we further argue that the City of Bakersfield should not consider the use of reach goals that go beyond state mandates. For example, the proposed reach goal is to eliminate natural gas in dwelling units should not be required. Natural gas is an integral part of the state's energy grid. Just this month, the California Energy Commission extended the life of three natural gas power plants to meet the daily needs of California residents by reducing natural gas in homes. You eliminate an affordable energy source for many in Bakersfield, specifically those residents in our disadvantaged communities. Furthermore, we are very concerned that the implementation of cap will leave the city vulnerable to future lawsuits. Jurisdictions that have introduced caps are now experiencing lawsuits related to their adopted plans. Consider, for example, the current housing crisis, which points to the impacts of SEQA-related lawsuits have had on stifling growth and needed solutions for a community..."
Mr. Nelms, I'm going to allow you to continue with that letter even though the time is up. I know you're representing many organizations. Go ahead.
Thank you. "We urge the city to focus on developing the general plan so it can facilitate growth, future development, and economic prosperity. By going down the path of implementing a cap, the future of the community is a greater risk for predatory lawsuits. Our greatest concern is for the economic vitality of our city and the prosperity of all its residents, especially those in disadvantaged communities and low-income households. It is widely accepted that the strategies and measures in the draft cap will lead to both higher costs of living and conducting business in the City of Bakersfield. Despite this general acknowledgment, we are unaware of any effort undertaken to quantify the impact on housing affordability, homelessness, wages, or job creation among other items. Disadvantaged communities and low-income households, especially those at risk of experiencing homelessness, are the most vulnerable. Should the city proceed with a cap, it is imperative that the city conduct a rigorous economic impact assessment of the draft cap to inform local decision-making. Lastly, as members of the local business community, we value the opportunity to participate in the development of documents and plans with wide and long-ranging impacts on our region's economic vitality. Despite the initial public review period opening on July 10, 2023, many of our organizations did not become aware of the draft cap's existence until early August. As we expressed during our in-person meeting with city staff on August 16, 2023, we are frustrated by the apparent lack of transparency and limited deliberate outreach to key stakeholders. Our coalition urges the city to eliminate the implementation of a cap. A cap is not required for a general plan and will invite predatory lawsuits. The cap contains reach goals that go beyond current laws and mandates that we will have serious impacts on our disadvantaged communities. Let's work together to put Bakersfield first, not misguided policy ideals that lack practical application." I have a copy for each of the city council, if I may.
Sure. Give it to the city clerk, if you would. And are you representing all those organizations on that letter? I saw...
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelms. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, I'm going to call the following three speakers: Russell Johnson, Derek Sprague, and Nick Hill.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, members of the City Council. Russell Johnson, happy to be here. I'm here on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors today. We stand in support of the coalition request to eliminate the cap, do not go beyond Sacramento mandates, and make sure that we have a general plan that works for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Hill, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm here representing Kern County Black Chamber of Commerce, and I stand with my colleagues to oppose the cap plan because, number one, I don't think it was researched enough to really identify the impact that it would have on the minority community, and I didn't see any incentives that was included in this plan that would allow for those in the disadvantaged and underserved areas to be able to afford the change from gas to just converting over to electric, you know, because, like I said, in the disadvantaged and underserved areas, that would hurt them the most. And I don't think that that was actually thought out in this Climate Action Plan. So I ask that you, number one, reevaluate, and we oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Sprague.
Good afternoon, Mayor Go, council members. My name is Derek Sprague. I'm the chief executive officer for the Bakersfield Association of Realtors and agree with the comments from our coalition partners regarding the letter that we've signed on to here that's been provided as well. Currently facing a housing crisis, inventory is limited, this Climate Action Plan would only make the dream of homeownership, out of reach further for some of the folks in our community, and we're really disappointed with what you'll find in the plan identified as EM 1.1.3, which is to promote energy efficiency incentives and opportunities such as the city's property-assessed Clean Energy Program through a newly-created green building program hosted by the city's Building Division. We're still cleaning up the devastation that was left from the PACE program that was taken back back in 2017, repealed by both the City Council and the Board of Supervisors. It took advantage... That energy, the financing mechanism for energy upgrades, it allowed for fraud in seniors, fraud of seniors and the disadvantaged who are regularly misled and price gouged for expensive appliances and upgrades that they could not afford. Families in our community, they were unable to keep up with the payments, and they lost their homes. As you're well aware, in 2019, the district attorney announced a settlement worth millions of dollars against PACE lenders accused of misleading customers within the Bakersfield and Kern County area. Why would we even consider bringing such a program back? I mean, that's... Any mention of it is really disappointing to our organization, and we would adamantly oppose anything considering bringing a PACE plan back into our market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the comments. I, for one, would like to say, you know, this is a public comment time, and we have till the end of the month. And Mr. Turnipseed, you still get to talk, I guess, but I just wanted to make a comment. And I, for one, would not recommend going beyond state mandates, and I think that that's where we'll probably end up. But it's great to have community involvement and community feedback, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Madam Clerk, is there one more speaker?
Mayor Go, our final speaker is Michael Turnipseed.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Taxpayers Association. You each have a copy of my... our comments, so I won't go through that today. There's just a couple of disconcerting things. I don't know what you paid for this 109-page study, but people who proofread me, because I send my stuff out before I write it to make sure it's clean and nice so you'd read, in the first two pages found 17 typos and misspelled words. In addition, the cutting and paper who did this cut and pasted this sentence in here, they didn't say "the City of Bakersfield." "The city," so this is standard boilerplate for whoever did this, "has a history of successfully addressing difficult challenges." You've probably done it some time, but a history? We can go back a long ways and talk about a lot of things that we didn't get right and are still working on, and we've been working on for 30 years. And with that said, with this Capital Action Plan, as I looked over San Diego's and other ones...
Climate Action Plan.
Climate Action Plan. But the feasibility, when you want to know, what is the feasibility of actually doing each of the measures? There's no measures. And in a meeting last week, we were told, and again yesterday at a meeting, that that's going to come after we adopt the plan. What's it going to cost? Well, we'll figure that out after we adopt the plan. Those should be part of the plan. And this plan has a long ways to go before it even gets worth consideration by your council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo that point, that last point that Mr. Turnipseed made, in that, yes, this plan does have a long way to go before it comes to the council. And I just wanted to ask, Mr. Clegg, can you just, for the benefit of the public, kind of outline the process and where we are in the process right now? Because I think that we need to... I think the council really needs to deliberate on this, but there is an appropriate time. Can you just kind of give us a overview?
Yeah, I'll do my best to have enough context, but not too much. So as we look at our Climate Action Plan, it's in conjunction with a review of several other really important long-range planning pieces. We have our general plan update that's going on, our housing element update, we've had our municipal services review, we've actually looked at, you know, whether or not to renew our habitat conservation plan, and all of this has been happening in a parallel timeframe where we've been looking at big policy decisions for the next, you know, 20 years of our land use pattern in the city. And so while I will acknowledge that we have some community partners that feel like, you know, we could have had some more stakeholder engagement on this particular topic, we've done quite a bit of engagement on our general plan update and our housing element, and it sounds like there's some opportunity to get comments and have a little more stakeholder engagement on this particular one because folks are very interested in it. So the specific timeline for the Climate Action Plan that was envisioned up to this point was to complete this comment period through August 31. Then it would be prepared for Planning Commission review over the next few months after that, and then we had targeted before the end of the calendar year a review by the city council. I think, again, given some of the interest, that timeline is our own timeline. I will reflect that it does impact our ultimate timeline to adopt the general plan because we want to do things in good sequence. If we push back adoption of the Climate Action Plan, it may push back a little bit our adoption of the general plan, but again, a worthy topic to make sure we get right going into the general plan. And so we're going to take the comments that we receive in this comment period, put those actually into a document where we're providing written answers to those comments, and then I think it's... There's merit to sitting down with stakeholders again after the comment period is over and before we bring a document back to the Planning Commission and the City Council to make sure we have that conversation that folks are asking to have. And so probably we'll push our originally anticipated timeline of this fall and December back a little bit, but those would be the next steps, is we're going to respond to the comment period, do some stakeholder engagement, and then it comes to Planning Commission, and then to City Council.
Okay. And another point that was made, an important one, I think, and important for the public to understand, is that a cap isn't necessarily required by the state, correct?
That is correct. I would reflect that there are aspects of sustainability planning requirements that come from the state that have to either be in your general plan or in a separate Climate Action Plan. But there are two different paths there, and so we have an option, but we do have to address some of the requirements of the state in our general plan if we don't do a Climate Action Plan.
Great, thank you. And then finally, just a statement. We spent many, many weeks, months rescinding the PACE program, along with our friends at the Realtors Association, and thanks to their great advocacy. There is no interest, at least from me, to revisit any type of program that even resembles the PACE program for the City of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, and I do appreciate all of you coming out. So many times, we don't hear from the other side. We only hear from one side. So I'm really appreciative that you took your time this afternoon. I wish this had been at the 5:15 meeting where the public would have been viewing, but anyway, we do appreciate you coming. I'm definitely in line with all of those that spoke on this Climate Action Plan today. I think there needs to be more engagement. Mr. Clegg and I talked about that, that you all are, you know, we as small business owners, I include myself in that, there's a lot at stake here, and this is a plan that the city's going to have to live with for the next 20 years, not the next year, or two years, or five years, the next 20 years. So I would definitely be in favor of including this into the general plan, but also, before doing so, because there's pitfalls on either side, to make sure that we get that outside counsel, Mr. Clegg, that's going to ensure that the city is protected, that whatever we do put together, and I'm hoping that'll be in the general plan and oppose the cap, that we have other eyes on it that could show us. We're not... It's no secret to anyone that Kern County is not an industry-friendly area to Sacramento, and so they're going to do everything they can to try to shut down our industries over time. We have to do everything we can to try to protect our industries over time. So I'm very grateful that you all have come today and brought this to light and that we have the opportunity to have this discussion. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
My little aide is blocking. Okay, thanks, Andrea. Well, several points. I'd like to sign an agreement with Councilmember Smith that I haven't yet seen anything in the cap that has any value to our local economy, to anything but raises the price of everything. I would ask that simultaneously to adopting whatever we adopt, that we do an economic impact study. It's the kind of thing we normally don't do. We just do things that cost a lot of money and never say, well, who is this going to affect? But that we do an economic impact study of each of the things that we say we will do our best implement, and it can't go beyond three to five years. There's never been a projection and impact study that was accurate, even three years, with even 10 or 20 or 30 percent. Corporations do three-year plans. We all did them all our life for public companies, and we laugh at them because no one knows what'll happen in three years. One year is hard enough. So... But I'd like to, you know, at least you could say, well, in the next three to five years, if we do this, this, and this, here will be the local economic impacts, and that we have the facts in front of us before we make any decisions, that we have some guidance or knowledge of how is this going to affect the people who live here and work here, or try to work here. I see this as simply another SEQA, which, for 30 years, all I did was battle, get sued, and sued, and sued, and sued, and sued by special interest groups using the word adequate as the reason our EIR wasn't adequate. And there is no definition of adequate. They never explained what adequate means. Judges don't know what it means. Everyone makes up a different idea. What does adequate mean? That stopped the Walmart for a year because one of our council members was told to use the word adequate in her comments up here. That's all it took, and that word, and all of it, and showed up in the lawsuit, cost us a million dollars. The project went forward anyway. Just a lot of people suffered. This is just a platform for lawsuits against locals, and it will cost millions of dollars. But it'll be written in Sacramento. This stuff is written by lawyers for lawyers to be able to sue, and nobody benefits but the lawyers. At this one now, the new word will be, you're in non-compliance with a cap. Those are the words they're going to use. Non-compliance, we'll say, what, non-compliance? Nobody knows what it means. You didn't try quite hard enough, and here come the lawsuits because there's no definition. We just teed it up for lawsuits. And trust me, they will happen in huge numbers. It'll be a feeding frenzy. So we better be careful in the language we use that we're allowed to use by the state. But right now, I would rather do whatever we have to do in the general plan, but be very, very careful of what we're getting ourselves into because this only hurts... The lawsuits are going to be against the City of Bakersfield, okay? That's the taxpayers here are going to pay, and against all the businesses of Bakersfield secondarily. They'll... I have the trucking industry calling me today. They're in a total panic. Well, you didn't try hard enough to replace all your engines. What does that mean? Well, I want an economic feasibility study on, if you do all these things, what does it cost? Or is it even economically feasible to put these goals in if we know from the beginning they're impossible to achieve? So these are the things that I'm concerned about, and I hope we do some of these studies, Mr. Clegg. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
We don't have any additional speakers. Mayor Go.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3A, City Council Priority Initiatives, Fiscal Year 2023/24 Work Plan. A staff memorandum was provided transmitting the work plan.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just to provide some context for this item, some reminders. So more than a year ago, the City Council walked through a visioning workshop that established a revised City Council vision, and it also established some revised City Council goals. Subsequent to that process, we held a workshop early in this spring to look at the City Council goals and what would be priority initiatives in support of each of those council goals. Now, the council goals are five broad council strategic goals. Staff has put together a five-year strategic plan that lists multiple objectives or initiatives in support of those five council goals. And then this year, in the spring, your council reviewed those objectives and initiatives and said, well, here are the ones that are priorities to get at in this next year. Instead, you know, we know some things are going to take longer over a three-, five-year period, but these are the ones that are the most high priority to address in this coming year. Since that time now, staff has put together a work plan that's essentially a fiscal year work plan of specific tasks that we're going to carry out in support of those priority initiatives of the city council. The ultimate goal is to be in a good cycle where every year you look at your five-year strategy. It's fairly broad, I think, and on purpose, but you narrow down to the priorities of that given year, and then you put budget, you put timelines, you put metrics to, you know, see what kind of progress we're making. And so today is just to review some of the elements of that work plan, and that will be really the priority marching orders for staffed resources and budget resources to carry out that work. So I've got two documents to share with you today, and if we could, city clerk, I don't know the transition to make my screen, the screen, there it is. So this is mostly just, again, to draw the context to our overall strategic plan, the vision of the council, our mission, and then within each of the council goals, we have key performance indicators we'll be tracking, and this objectives and initiatives. It looks like I need to zoom in a little bit more there. Each of the objectives and initiatives that you see here were the source for pulling into this priorities document for the work plan. My only purpose in sharing this document was to draw the connection to what you'll see in the subsequent document. So you heard in public comment, this is a very small font, very large spreadsheet. We're not going to see this view throughout. I'm going to zoom in on key parts. But the reason for showing this look here is that as you look over to the right, we do have columns that identify the priority, they identify the staff impact, they identify the department lead. We also have columns that identify what quarter in which we're going to accomplish these goals. We also identify what metrics we're going to use to measure these initiatives, and ultimately, it's going to be a document for us internally to track what we're doing as staff and having status updates and provide, you know, regular updates to the council, but not at a level that's going to be so detailed as our internal tracking document. So shifting... So shifting gears, what I would point to for the council focus for this conversation today is really looking at each of these initiatives and the tasks underneath them. So you'll note, again, each of these is tied to one of our council goals, economic opportunity for all. Becoming the most business-friendly city in California is the overarching objective. What are the initiatives and tasks in support of that objective? So you'll see on your screen, as well as up on the big screen, let me just zoom in a moment there, is that one of our chief initiatives in becoming the most business-friendly city is the ease of the development process. Council identified this as one of your highest priority items. And so the tasks that we're going to undertake in pursuit of that initiative are streamlining our development review process. We've done a lot of streamlining through our electronic permitting system. I think there's still some opportunities to take a look at that. We've set aside funds this year to do an efficiency study of our development process. As you'll note on that second bullet, it's about completing the implementation of our permitting system. We've held a lot of training sessions, but we're going to continue to do more training sessions for staff and for our system users. We're having regular workshops around the customer process to make sure that it's customer-focused. I already mentioned the efficiency study. And then we're working towards a paperless inspection process as well to keep things moving. We're also, we currently have staff in three separate locations that, and sometimes our permit applicants have to visit three different locations to process their permits. The electronic permitting system helps for those that let the electronic system be their workflow, but for those that are coming in, we're going to create one place for folks to go. Our business success team, that is about our economic development department actually creating like an ombudsman's function where these individuals will be able to handhold and walk our applicants through the challenges they may be experiencing in our process and be advocates for that customer side of the process. And then we would just note that a pending item around the habitat conservation plan could affect the timeliness of the permit process and predictability of the permit process. And lastly, our fire department specifically is going through a review of their timeframes and fee schedules for large projects to try and be as, again, quick and friendly as possible. So for each of these, my intent is to cover those high-level items and pause for some, you know, council feedback and reflection, but this will be our core work in this area in this coming year.
There are any requests or comments? Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. This, I am impressed with the detail of your work plan. This is a, this is, this is a real work plan with specific objectives, so I think, I think actually measurable objectives. So this is a huge step forward to where we might have been five or six years ago, this type of organizing your work, you know, plan your work, work your plan. And I congratulate all of you for doing this. It's fantastic. You actually will get some things done this way. Instead of, you can say, we got this done, this done, this, and that, rather than saying, well, we got some things done. No, it'll be concrete. I like that. I just have kind of one area that I'm, I say this every time, but I'm not sure in the goals, if you go down the page for the vision for downtown, that the descriptions are exactly, let's say, I'm not sure they're what I had, was looking for or hoping we would be doing. They seem real specific about a street quarter here and something like that, kind of piecemeal. Just to say one more time, what, what I was hoping we would do was come up with an entirely new vision of, and that's like a Disneyland map, okay, of revital, of renovating the whole downtown, where we'd have a plaza here, we'd have a park here, we'd knock this building out here, we'd bring a boulevard in here, I mean, major surgery, within the constraints that we have to live with, of, you know, utilities and sewers and all these things, but something imaginative. And that takes certain planning firms who have some experience in that, in conjunction with, we, we will really need a consultant that advises us and the planner. What has worked around the United States in the revitalization of downtowns like ours? Without that context, a planner really is just drawing a lot of funny, pretty pictures, trying to please this group and this group with no context. So we sort of need the economic end and guidance saying, this is what's worked in towns like yours, because in the end, the two have to come together so it's viable, believable, and once we have that, we can start attracting outside capital. This won't be built with Bakersfield capital. No one should think this is ever going to happen with money from here. We don't have, we have some locals who probably have enough money, but they're, this isn't their thing. They're not going to put 200, 300, 400, 500 million into revitalizing downtown Bakersfield. And it's not going to come from the government, think, we'll just get a bunch of grants. Well, I mean, I hope we do. It'd be great to get a grant here and there, but they're usually so restricted that they don't let us do the kinds of things we want to do with our downtown. So I'm hoping we can massage this a little bit to get, this will take, I almost like a year timeframe, so we don't let it go in for three years. But we put this process together so at the end of, let's say, a year from when we start, we have something pretty exciting that now we kind of start shopping it around the country, looking for big players who see and say, you know, they've proven they have the demand for this, this, and this. These are the things that worked. That's an exciting-looking vision. Hey, maybe we, big players, maybe we should go in there. We put a, go up there, and there will be intimate domain, there will be all sorts of crazy things that you'll have to do if you really want to create a new downtown. Because our downtown has some streets that are working well, but as a whole, it's pretty bad. Drive down Chester Avenue, you come into Bakersfield from Valencia, and you drive down Chester Avenue, it's all boarded up, and you're going to go, man, this seems overwhelming. So we do need the help, and you've got to have, I treat it like a real estate project. You've got to have something pretty exciting to get other people to put their money up because they have a lot of choices. So that's our task, is to create something that exciting that others will put big capital up because they believe in it. So I hope we can kind of move towards that type of a study or visioning process.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And I scrolled down to that element of the plan, and it sounds like we didn't describe it well, but what we tried to describe on this last bullet in the big box on the screen right now of complete the downtown planning visualization, that was the intent, was that when I say visualization, because we want it to not just be a sort of a paper document, but with pictures and maps and, you know, kind of like a master plan. So what you just asked for was our intent on delivering the downtown planning visualization, that item.
Could you give consideration to, it would be, again, an outside consultant from the economic standpoint to help guide this process so it didn't just, because planners are great, I work with them, but you have to have that other element, keep you balanced a little bit.
Agreed, and I think that's good feedback. We assume we're going to need to bring some both economic development and planning consultants to help, you know, deliver this plan. It's not something we would try and do in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray, did you turn yours, your request off? Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. On the ease of development process, many of the bullets talk about building permitting, and I just want to make sure that that includes land development. I know, you know, things start with subdivisions, and that's also a very difficult process, and I want to make sure that that also is all tied together into the one-stop shop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Since we're still on that topic, I didn't want to belabor this, but just real quickly, we had some contractors come together, both small and larger contractors, two separate meetings, to discuss the ease of development. What is, what has come out of those? It's, we, how have we moved forward?
I, I don't have, I think, a great checklist of how we've moved forward, just to be candid.
Okay.
But what we, when we talk about streamlining the development review process, the intent is to take the comments and feedback from that, those sessions, some other feedback that we've received as well, and the efficiency study to look at, are there, are there particular steps that, you know, maybe are extra that we can take out? Are there other steps that maybe we'll want to put back in that, that folks are asking for? And so we have still to deliver on that, but the intent is to take that feedback in the efficiency study and look at, you know, what process steps can be plus or minus to help us be a little more streamlined and a little customer-friendly.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure we're still thinking on those meetings we had. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Mr. Clegg, you can go on.
Yeah, I'm going to move forward, and I will note two things I forgot to mention. One, we're probably going to spend a little more time on those really high, the city council identified the top five items of priority, and then another, you know, five to make the top 10. I'm going to spend a little more time on those top 10 and probably move pretty quickly through some of these others. And also, you'll note, we've got a bigger crowd than usual from our staff. I should have acknowledged our department directors and senior managers in the organization who really did the heavy lift on putting these elements into this plan. It's reflective of their business plans that they've developed as departments for what they're going to do in this coming year. We made sure those were weaved together with the support of these city council priority items. And, you know, when you look at who's the identified lead, you know, it's the folks that are sitting in the room, so we're thankful that they're here, and they're also available to answer, you know, some specific questions if I don't have the answers for those. So moving forward, we did identify some key economic development game changer projects. So I would call them as a tech park, advanced manufacturing park, and an inland port. We've identified for two of those some very specific next steps around which funding sources we're going to go for, what design elements we need to identify, and some key designations, whether that's from state or federal, that help us get grant monies coming. And then on the advanced manufacturing park, we're, we're looking at spending some of our own city dollars to work on some design for that, and then look for a potential funding Also, even though this is not something that's going to be directly within probably city limits, we recognize this as one of our really important industry clusters, and the energy industry cluster is direct air capture. And so we did support the, the direct air capture grant application process. We made a commitment to support the community engagement plan, despite, again, the actual physical location of this hub will probably be outside of city limits, but it impacts our metro with jobs and workforce training, and so we're helping to facilitate the community engagement plan for that $30 million project that, as a start recently, was announced with some funding from the Department of Energy, from the federal government. We're also going to be working on our entrepreneurship ecosystem. We have some things already in place. We've spent some ARPA monies to start a technical assistance program, and they were going to be offering $1.5 million in grants. And we're also looking at some additional workforce development around sort of digital literacy or small business, and also just looking at other ways that we can support our small businesses. One of the key findings from Brookings was we need to grow our own, and so these are the ways we're going to be working on growing our own. When it comes to redevelopment, we divided that up into commercial districts, but then also kind of separated out downtown because there's a, you know, a priority in and of itself around downtown. But we also want to do some visual renderings around Old Town Kern and MLK Boulevard. We also are doing some work in southeast Bakersfield beyond there. We've talked about doing some, this is more of an economic development plan around south Bakersfield, what really is the look along Taft Highway corridor as future development opportunities, and then some particular projects. We, to facilitate the development down MLK Corridor, Plan Sewer area, as well as facade improvement project up in the northeast to really stimulate that business district there. We're also moving forward on our parking enterprise study and looking to establish a parking enterprise to both better manage it and also to really maximize that resource for economic development largely in our urban core. And I'll pause there in event there's any questions on some that I've just covered. Okay.
Are there any comments? Questions to speak? I don't see any. Go ahead.
Also, part of our urban core efforts is that we've had this on our task list for a little while to get at, and we are making progress. Our cultural resource survey is nearly complete, actually, and we're looking at the Mills Act being done in this next year. Speaking to downtown, we spoke to it a little bit earlier. We know we have some downtown studies already in place. We're trying to take the Making Downtown Vision Plan and actualize it with some more specific studies in some specific areas, as well as looking at our general plan process related to downtown. And specifically, we have a focus right now on Chester Avenue as the key north-south backbone, and some of the redevelopment in the properties there is needed, as was noted by Councilmember Freeman. And then lastly, that we do, did intend to have this visioning process, but a very visual visioning process to help look at what should go where in downtown in the future. We're still working on creating a development fund for downtown. We'd actually set aside budgeted resources, but we needed to find how we're going to use those dollars. And then broadly, not just about downtown, but for all of our commercial areas and businesses, looking at having a broader set of economic incentives. You know, the economic opportunity area has been a great asset, but typically, cities will have five or six different types of those, you know, business support programs in their toolkit, and we're going to flesh that out in this coming year to be prepared to, you know, better support our businesses. And then mixed-use projects, that was identified in our economic development strategic plan. We want to actually identify one or two projects that we would propose some additional city support for, not just private capital-driven, but create some demonstration projects that would facilitate, we hope, future private capital investment by creating some mixed-use in some of these key commercial corridors. And then lastly, in this economic opportunity for all section, we also recognize, in addition to some of our efforts around job and workforce and small business support, we also want to create workforce into our, our trades and into our key industry clusters around advanced manufacturing. These are good-paying jobs that we actually have a shortage of here, and we're trying to create more inroads into those types of jobs as well.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. If I can just bring up a couple of points. Number one is I'm encouraged that the cultural resource survey is near completion. The Mills Act is something that many property owners in downtown continue to bring up and ask about, and so I think it would be, I would hope it'd be a priority. I see that it is low staff impact, and I wondered if this survey is near completion, if we might think about moving this up and not wait till Q4.
I, Q4 is when we feel like that the ordinance will be ready for adoption, but the cultural resources survey is probably like a Q2.
The other item I was wondering about, we've done a lot of work in terms of infrastructure studies related to storm drainage and our comprehensive sewer study. We're undergoing a second iteration of our parking study in advance of our goal to enhance our downtown enterprise zone. Are we looking at an enhanced infrastructure financing district, and where might that fall in the work plan?
Yeah, so when we look at the downtown development fund, that's one of the considerations is should it largely be about infrastructure, or should it be about other incentives? One of the things we found is around incentives, that it does trigger some other factors that make the incentives less appealing. make the incentives less appealing, and but one of the areas that we can make a big impact in is infrastructure. And while it hasn't been part of a formal downtown development fund, we actually have, you know, funded some infrastructure in storm water from ARPA and some also some streets infrastructures from a regular streets in the downtown. And so we will look at the EIFD as part of this potential downtown development fund. We are aware already of some of the pros and cons, but we'll bring those back to council. We actually think you can achieve some of the same benefits of an EIFD without the formal adoption, which is a pretty costly process. But we'll wrap that into this downtown development fund conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Go ahead and continue.
Okay, shifting gears to safety and resilience is largely our public safety and homelessness. So police staffing is one of our highest priorities. We are moving in lots of directions to reach our goals. We do believe that by our January academy, that we'll be right close to that full net gain. Of course, we don't know how many separations we might see between now and then, but our estimates are that we'll be very close to full staffing at our January academy. It's also worth noting, here you'll see some references to our impact teams, Organized Retail Theft Unit, the DOJ stipulated judgment compliance. Without the additional sworn staffing, it would be very hard to create the capacity to address our requirements in the stipulated judgment, as well as create these specialized teams. And so being able to have additional impact and having this organized retail theft unit, and we're pursuing some additional grant funding to further support that unit, is allowing us to get at some of the most, I think, frustrating impacts of chronic crimes, even though, you know, there's, I think there's systemic challenges around, you know, chronic low-level offenses. This is allowing us to prioritize and get after those in a big way. The next section is about our response times, and so we're looking at a couple of additional innovative service delivery models beyond the behavioral health clinicians in the 911 center. We think that there's a couple of other things that we can do to help both answer quickly calls, as well as sort of redirect calls, and some of those are through technology, where there's some really promising technologies out there that are helping us to be actually quicker and more engaging with the public without maybe some of the same staff costs. We are going to continue to look at that private security funding and deploying it the best ways that we can. And as I noted earlier, some of the technology is related to our response times, but also some of our telephone reporting queue times. We hope to make that process more customer-friendly and faster through some of those initiatives. I'll pause there. Those are some big ones. Okay, I'll keep moving. So as it relates to our radio program, I'm not going to belabor that a lot, but there's a very detailed approach that we're taking to deploy that, you know, 20-plus million-dollar project, but it's now live and we're moving forward. We had our kickoff just last week. This next one is a big impact item, is trying to identify a way to have dedicated jail beds for chronic low-level offenses, and we're working closely on that with the county, the sheriffs, as well as the full criminal justice system. We're pending some feedback from our county partners on that, that would give us a little more information about where our funding and partnership would have the biggest impact. We also have identified for some years now the possibility and need for a joint public safety training facility, and we're pursuing with some partnerships at the academic level, as well as some of our advocacy efforts, you know, ways to get at funding for that project, but did want to note that it's a very big price tag. It was just something the city wouldn't take on alone. This is a city-county and workforce partnership that would be required. We're also going to continue to work on our trust-building efforts across the board. We've actually been able to have a couple of police community, excuse me, community police academies. We're going to continue to do that. We're also making enhancements in our community relations unit. We're going to pursue junior police academies and then do listening sessions out in each of our police zones. Just noting really quickly on the stipulated judgment, we do have a year-two work plan. We've been working now with the community advisory panel. We're going to take many policies through that panel before ultimate adoption by the city. And there's some additional policy and training development that'll happen that was required in year two of that as well. I'm going to go ahead and pause there.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to reinforce the importance of the chronic offenders accountability and the dedicated jail beds, working with the sheriff. I know we've tried, but, you know, that really solves a lot of issues, and we need to push that high priority.
Yeah, appreciate the comment, Councilmember, and I would suggest that our ability to make progress in some other areas is not possible without some of that accountability.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Go ahead and continue.
Just wanted to note, on the arson side, we did specifically want to call that out. We've seen too many structure fires and a particular repeat structure fires. The accelerant canine that the council helped to facilitate, we think is going to have a good impact in our ability to solve arsons and identify when accelerants have been used. We're going to look at some of our differential response models also here, kind of like we have in police. We're going to expand that over to our fire operations. And then also want to do some community-oriented work with American Red Cross. And also, we added some fire inspectors to help speed up our timelines and also be able to get to more inspections across the city. And then lastly, around CalVIP, we're continuing forward to just stay the course on that, but the additions in this coming year are using some of our ARPA funds to continue the previously grant-funded activities to also look at that intervention mediation and that prevention work that we talked about in our last workshop, is deploying those prevention dollars to help make impacts in our neighborhoods with youth that are at highest risk of entering into those lifestyles. All right, we'll shift gears now to infrastructure. Oh, excuse me, no, I still have more pieces under the public safety, and as I mentioned before, the the community prevention programs here. And then ARPA Security Grant Program that is now underway, we're in phase one. We've received 30 applications from businesses for phase one. Phase two is coming next month, and then we'll probably already be in phase three next month as well. My anticipation, just to let you know, is that we're going to spend that $500,000 pretty quickly. And if we look at the statistics and the impacts for that investment, could come back at mid-year and say, you know, that there's good merit to allocate additional funding there, but we have seen a lot of interest from the community. I didn't want to forget, too, about when we think about safety and resilience, there's a high priority put on helping with our traffic safety. And so we have here our Complete Streets, Transportation Development Standards, Traffic Calming Program, and the circulation element of our comprehensive general plan. And so these are the the specific steps to getting at each of those pieces. The Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, we've actually got a couple of our first projects on cue. One of those is actually on your agenda tonight, to put some some speed humps in one of the neighborhoods that was identified as having one of the highest rates of incidents. And the Complete Streets Resolution and Ordinance will be deliverables under this program as well. Also noting, council identified, you know, multimodal demonstration projects and CIP safety projects as a high priority. We set aside budget funds, several million dollars, to get at projects, and so we've just listed out the specific areas where we're going to make progress towards those demonstration projects. This is not all-inclusive, but these are the initial projects that we've identified to go and get that work done. And lastly, under this is our sort of Community Vitality Encampment Response. We are, based on the pilot project that we did earlier this calendar year, we are going to create a dedicated call center to be the inflow and outflow of all encampment requests. We feel like that's one of the key pieces of having a really streamlined, coordinated response of all of our teams. We also found that we had data in five or six different places and requests coming from lots of different directions. We're going to all put it in one place, and that will allow us to have better data and also better coordination. We're going to try some co-response teams. We've actually already enhanced impact in the evening hours, and we're going to work to have flood and our cleanup crews complement them in the evening hours. And also, we feel like we need to focus on a small percentage of the population, but that does a very large percentage of the impact to our businesses and find solutions that help address those high acuity individuals, and then continue around some of our, again, differential response models, meaning, you know, we need to work with behavioral health. We need to work with healthcare providers and all those partners to try and encourage folks to accept services as opposed to chronic homelessness.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Just a general comment and then a couple of more specific ones. Number one is, public safety, it's clear for, I think, all of us on this dais is number one priority for the city. We can't do anything else unless people in our community and our constituents feel safe and secure, both at home and at their place of business and work. And it is, it is the number one priority. It's listed number two here, but it is the number one priority for the city of Bakersfield and for this council. And so I appreciate a lot of these different initiatives. I specifically appreciate some of the work that we're doing related to the CalVIP and violence intervention work, and want to give you a lot of credit, Mr. Clegg, for your leadership in this effort, also with regards to youth interventions and violence prevention work in our community, which is long overdue, and the reality now that we're making significant investments, in part thanks to the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative, I think is a great step forward and will have lots of benefits long term for many of our neighborhoods. Wanted to jump into the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. This year, this council adopted the Traffic Calming Handbook, and that was a great step forward. I want to give Mr. Straklous and the Public Works team a lot of credit for their initiative and really implementing this handbook right away. And it's been my experience working with several constituents who have already addressed some of their specific concerns in neighborhoods that I represent, that the Public Works Department has really gotten on it and has worked very diligently and quite quickly to at least implement some tier-one treatments to really calm traffic. And it's my understanding that after those tier-one treatments are implemented, then that our traffic engineers will then continue to study the issues within the neighborhood and then look towards possible additional investments or tier-two interventions in the future. I think it's a great approach, and I really appreciate, again, the speed at which we're responding to these constituent requests now, and the fact that now we have the handbook that allows us to move so much more quickly and have a breadth of tools at our disposal, I think is a huge step forward for neighborhood safety. So again, congratulations to the staff and really hearing our message from this dais that we want to address traffic safety in our neighborhoods for our families that we represent. It's a great step forward. I do have a few additional asks and referrals, if we can include in the work plan. Number one is, we have a number of constituents who do have requests, and they often wonder where their request may fall in the prioritization list, and when they may be heard and when their issues actually may be resolved. And so it would be, I think, it would be really beneficial for all of us if we can develop a outward-facing sort of kind of public website or some sort of, some sort of map that allows for any community member to identify where the projects are that have already been implemented, tier-one projects that have been implemented, areas that are being currently studied for tier-two interventions, and then also those tier-two interventions that have been implemented as well, kind of giving all of us a better sense of what the work is and how we're progressing moving forward, a real-time map. And I know that's another piece to the puzzle, but I think it really will help us in our process as we continue to address traffic calming throughout the city.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, just to the general feedback. Yeah, I mean, kudos to Greg and team. They are moving quickly. I would confirm what you shared about, you know, we felt there's an opportunity to get some quick wins with some of these tier-one treatments, but yes, the plan is to look at some of the the most chronic challenging areas for some tier-two or tier-three treatments. I will share with this council that, you know, historically, we have actually collected these requests for traffic calming, but before the update, it was a pretty slow process and cumbersome, and that's not to say we're going to blow through all those really quickly either. Like, there's a pretty long list of community-generated interest in traffic calming, and so it'll take some time to get through all of those community requests that we've really received over the last, you know, two to three years. And so it is a long list, but we're also, we're wanting to be respectful and balance those that have kind of been on the waitlist, but also look at the statistics and the data and say, where are some of the most dangerous places, and let's like, you know, make some impacts in those areas. And so we're moving in both of those ways, and we'll do some bigger demonstration projects. I would also say, we're moving quickly because of the urgency, but also it gives us a chance to make it a demonstration project. We're going to learn from some of these and say, you know, that's, maybe that's a great treatment, maybe that's not the best treatment. We'll, you know, make, adjust some of our treatments into the future. And so I would encourage, you know, council to reflect on some of the staff activity that, you know, we need to try some things and see how they work. You know, obviously, we're going to go into it with, you know, having researched, you know, good practices in other places, but, you know, we need some of that experience on our streets. And I think that'll tell us a lot more about where to make those bigger investments in those later tiers as well. I think for implementing the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, to do a map, I think, you know, if we were to build sort of a real-time, like, GIS dashboard, that's probably a longer runway than to have, you know, a regular mapping tool that's available for folks to look at. And so I think we'll go back with the team and, you know, talk about what that might take, but my recommendation would be, you know, let's, because I, you know, they're mapping this already, let's, let's put that all on a map, make that available to folks as a quick win, and it may be further down the road that we have a more sort of interactive real-time GIS layer. That might, you know, be a longer-term item.
Great. I appreciate that, because invariably, we will have, or inevitably, we will have some constituents questioning the process, right, and how decisions are being made, how certain neighborhoods are being prioritized, and we want to be able to communicate clearly where we are and what number of requests, how many requests we actually have as a city, and what, for lack of a better term, what the wait time is, really. You know, how long can someone reasonably wait for, or should they expect a treatment in their particular neighborhood? Obviously, there's really dangerous spots and they're all throughout the city that require attention immediately, and the resources don't necessarily allow us to get to everything right, right away. So we have to do whatever we can to really communicate how we're prioritizing, how we're going to get to these things. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Again, thank you to Public Works for getting after it and going for it. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to infrastructure. So we have had a lot of comments around alleys and alley challenges, and so we're looking at an alley closure program that would be responsive to, oh, excuse me, I, we're not into infrastructure. into infrastructure yet. I, that one is a two-pager, whereas some of the others are one-pagers. So around homelessness, we have recognized that our, some of our through fares were designed for other uses that are not being used for those uses today. And so we're working hard to adopt some solutions that will help us get at alley closures a little bit faster, but also, you know, some of our typical processes like encroachment permits and vacations, they don't work quite the same as what we're really trying to do is just limit access, and so we're trying to come up with a different solution there. We've been working a long time on our regional homeless action plan with the collaborative. We're getting really close on that, and Anthony Valdez is doing a fantastic job facilitating our interest in that process, and we'll complete that this year. Also, recognizing that there are challenges around some of the underlying factors, and so this is really a listing of several projects that we're trying to pursue that help us get at some of those other underlying challenges for homelessness. And then we couldn't fail to reflect on the housing side of things, and this kind of got a little bit at, I think, a question earlier from Councilmember Smith, but we know that housing is part of the equation, and so have several pretty aggressive lists around fee-to-fuel programs, prospectus for affordable housing, our impact fee review that's underway, and the residential zoning code update. And then likewise, very specific to affordable housing, and, because making housing affordable is even includes market rate, but very specific to affordable housing, we have our affordable housing strategy. We're looking at a community development corporation, some of these very specific projects that are, you know, on our priority lists, as well as using wisely some of our other funding sources to get at both homeownership and home reinvestment as, you know, ways to increase access to quality, affordable housing. Also, the full launch of the ADU program, there's actually probably some subtasks that we could list underneath that, but the full program implementation will happen in this work cycle as well. And then lastly, is looking at how we use those ARPA dollars to go after those blighted properties and infill. And we're still looking at some of these diversion options through advocacy efforts. And then lastly, this was a note of the council, and I just wanted to note for the council that one of the good pieces about delivering on this last one for a master EIR for high density is that Mr. Boyle has set it up in a way that our general plan update and EIR for the general plan with new areas with zoning designations that match with mixed use will be accomplished through our general plan update. So we're going to, we're going to knock that goal out with our general plan update. All right. We have, do we have one question, Mayor? Okay. All right. Now for real, we're going to infrastructure. Sorry, my pages, when we weren't zoomed in, were organized a little bit differently, but now as we're zoomed in. So I won't belabor some of these Centennial Corridor. We're opening up this year. We're going to move forward with Movements Seven and Eight. We've got those in plans to make those a reality as well. We've set some key targets on resurfacing, is to get 125 lane miles done this next year. That's, that's an aggressive number. We're aiming, over the next three to four years, to get our pavement condition index number up to 70. We think we can do that with existing budget allocations over the next about three budget cycles. We're also going to still try and get money for some of our big projects. That's Hagaman, the Chester and H Chester, good news. We've received money since the start of this fiscal year, but we need to get some more dollars for that H Street, Complete Street. And then we're doing a lot of design work so that we have shovel-ready projects for other complete streets projects. We've got an important project on Manor Street that's going to be completed this year. And then this is a more broad goal about just making sure we do environmental and design work to get as many projects shovel-ready as possible. We also have some challenges around spacing. We've grown as a staff to the city, fortunately, through Measure N, but we haven't really grown in many spaces. And so we're, we're really giving a close assessment before we make some longer-term plans of how do we address that in the long run. Some of these others, you know, may not be, you know, as much in the forefront of the public mind, but important that we do complete our solid waste master plan. We are moving forward with the Sci-Fi High-Speed Broadband that will address any digital divide challenges. Our Community Choice Aggregate Feasibility Study will be complete in this next year. And then we have had several solar projects in process. We're going to finish that first phase and then start the planning for the next batch, because we've got, you know, many more facilities that merit additional solar arrays to get us energy savings. As we move forward, we also know that, you know, we've got requirements down the road to have more of an EV fleet, and so we're trying to identify ways to prepare for that into the future and be ready for that. And then on water conservation and just cost of infrastructure and maintenance, we're doing a lot of work to have more drought-friendly landscapes that also look good but are less work, less cost. Pause there.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the Sci-Fi broadband, and I hadn't heard about that in a while. What is the update on that? Where's that at?
So our target is, they need a, basically a master license permit or master encroachment permit, and we're working out the final details with them on that. Our target is to, you know, get that done in this, and I'm, it's actually on here, but I can't remember which quarter that was. I think it's in Q2, so that then they would go live this fiscal year and starting to do construction.
Great. Thank you.
And, and then, lastly, on this, this page, you know, we reflected, you know, earlier in today's meeting that we have, you know, multiple planning documents that are a really big lift. In fact, you know, it's, it's pretty uncommon to try and tackle this many large planning documents all at once, and so Chris Boyle and his team are, you know, giving it the full refresh, and we're going to be done with many of them in this fiscal year and close on the full general plan update up into the next fiscal year. We're continuing forward with the Clean City Initiative, just some additional pieces here. The dumpster program is going to have more elements. We're adding an illegal dumping enforcement program. We've actually hired a full-time code enforcement officer to be dedicated to that, and going to put some other tools around that individual to get at illegal dumping. And then, as noted earlier, we're going to make some enhancements to rapid response and Clean City teams to, to get as much value out of their efforts and save their time as, as much as we can, and we're going to continue to do some proactive code enforcement. Here's just some numbers for council reflection on the chronic nuisance properties. We've set some targets, that this is how many we want to be able to purchase in this next year and address through either demolitions or rehabs. Our Parks Master Plan is set to be adopted this year as well. It's been, you know, more than a year incoming, and that's going to also have some important direction coming out of that about what amenities and parks and deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed, and we are continuing to address some of the recommendations that have come out of the Blue Zone process as part of those planning efforts. We'll see Linnell Brahma have construction this coming year, as well as finishing Phase Four of Kaiser. It's actually almost done with the new football fields there. On annexations, we're continuing to push forward with our island annexations. We're actually going to have several large annexations as well that we anticipate, so at least eight annexations in this coming year. And then just to reflect for council what our long-term plans are, we know there's going to be several annexations that are going to occur over time. We're going to bring forward a strategy that council can weigh in on for how we prioritize our annexations beyond this fiscal year, but we, we are confident that we can get through these eight in this next fiscal year. All right. I'll keep going. Oh, was there?
Councilmember Gray.
Just a real quick question and something to bring to the Public Works. The hardscape and landscape that we're trying to do to, you know, cut back, I think it's a great idea, and it cuts back a lot of maintenance, but I've noticed, I brought this to the city manager's attention, I don't know, maybe six months to a year ago, about 24th Street, how that has become, just today, I'm driving down it again, and that's why it's on top of my mind, just a weedy-looking mess instead of landscape, you know? And what happened there was the nurseryman oversold the city. It wasn't a matter of the plants so much they chose, but it's a matter they chose too many, and that cost the city a lot more money because they're just putting, you know, five-gallon pots in the ground like they're going out of style and staying, instead of planting, what's it's going to look like in a year, two years, three years. So I would just caution, when we're doing all this new hardscaping and landscape, that we really pay attention to not being oversold on what we're putting in, because it looks a whole lot better when you're, you're not crowding it. So anyway, just a simple thing, but a way that we can save some funds.
I think that's good reflection, councilmember, and actually, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Gonzalez has recently asked staff about what's, what is our maintenance plan there on 24th Street, because it has become overgrown. We actually, just for some quick reflection, we, we had some, some challenges with the contract agency, and we've made some corrections there, and we've actually, you know, had a different agreement now with the contractor to get in there and, and cut things back and, you know, get into a better maintenance plan. But I would agree that often less is more, and I think if you look at the Rosedale Highway project, that was another demonstration project on the turf replacement, you know, it's, it's much more manageable. I would recommend to the council, as we go and do some of these projects, because you need to anticipate future growth of those plantings, in the first year or two, you might get some comments of, hey, it's looking a little sparse, but we may need folks to be a little patient with us so that that full growth comes, because we don't want it, I think we've learned from 24th Street, and we're implementing some better methods, but we may have to encourage folks to stick with us for maybe a year as some of those plants come in, but less is often more.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christian, for this update. It's been a while since I've had an opportunity to connect with staff on the island annexations and then also the larger annexations. Can you provide us, it seems like these are pretty, pretty significant and large annexations compared to some of the annexations that have come before this body in recent memory. Can you share a little bit about what the location is on some of these?
Yeah, so the island annexations are principally in the southeast and in north Bakersfield. These are sort of the last, we had identified 10 different islands that are really, you know, by the definition of even state code, you know, should probably be incorporated. And so these are the last four of those, again, principally southeast, but a little bit also up in the north, up towards Seventh Standard. Then the, the four larger annexations are actually applicant-driven. Now, we've had a pretty proactive annexation approach, where we're trying to meet with folks and make it palatable and encourage folks to come in, but the 1,600 acres is largely in south Bakersfield, applicant-driven for, you know, future growth. Would you add anything more to that, Mr. Boyle?
Each of the four large annexations are associated with identifying sufficient sites for the vacant sites inventory, associated with the housing element update. The four locations are, there's about, the overwhelming majority of that land is in the south. There's a thousand-plus acre annexation, generally situated around Taft and Gosford. There's also about a 280-acre area along the Cottonwood Corridor, centered on Pacheco. There is another 260 acres or so that is surrounded by both the city of Shafter and the city of Bakersfield at, at Seventh Standard in Zirkur. And there's also another shy of 100 acres that's located at the northeast corner of Snow and Callaway.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Moving forward, we're going to be continuing to make some improvements, capital improvements at our animal shelter. We know that there's needs there. We're going to start with some safety improvements and then probably move to some of those operational and kennel improvements. This has been a priority of the council to try and address the beautification of our highway corridors. It's always been a challenge, sort of from, there's other projects that seem more imminent, but we're going to continue to pursue funding for those areas. We do have some gateway projects. We have welcome signs, north, south, east, west, that we're pursuing, or finishing up an auto mall placemaking project that's been in the works, as well as we'll be in, finishing up the construction and ultimate installation of some of the gateway elements at Hosking. And then I do expect for some of our sort of development target areas, Stockdale Ranch has a gateway project that has been proposed by developers there in that area, and we're helping to facilitate. And then we're trying to find ways to integrate our, into some of our complete streets projects, several of the complete street projects that were listed earlier. We're finding ways to have good placemaking incorporated into those areas. When we're also looking at redevelopment in some of our core geographies, these are just some target numbers of the properties we're going to go after in those areas. Our prosperity neighborhood program, we began last fiscal year. We want to carry forward with the work plan for that first area in Niles-Monterey, several aspects to that. And then we're, you know, also be able to start to focus a little bit more in on the MLK Lakeview area with some redevelopment planning. The park renovation is a big piece to that, but we also have completed the TCC application for that area, and if we were awarded that grant, then that would be added to this item here as well. We're also looking just at our community events and special events permits and policy. There has not been consistency across the board, not the highest priority impact item, but we are going to be spending staff time looking at a, a new handbook here. And part of the reason that it's listed here for council consideration is that many of you hear from folks who organize events, and so some of these changes could affect those individuals. We're going to do our best to educate them about what the changes are and give folks advance notice, and also we've set aside some funding to offset impacts to events. But it could be high sensitivity, even though it may not, you know, be a huge dollar amount. These are, you know, sensitive community events, we want to make sure feel supported. Also, didn't want to miss opportunities to reflect on some of the important work in areas like our water master plan, important to our future sigma goals, rates, and other water operations. And then we're still working on some of the specifics underneath this, but we're going to be looking for ways to maximize water in the river area as a priority objective as well.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to back up to the chronic nuisance properties, and we had talked about using eminent domain as another tool in that toolbox, and we're going to create a map and maybe move forward on that, and I don't see that on here.
So in consultation with our legal counsel, we're calling those redevelopment plans, but that's where it means. That's where we would leverage tools within the redevelopment plan and redevelopment areas, and so that's reflected up above in the, the key areas that we're going to do redevelopment area plans for.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And I'm mindful of the time, so I'm going to keep moving pretty quick through this last few bits, but we're getting close to the end here. Water conservation, we're going to do a few specific projects here as well. We have some turf replacement projects. We want to complete 50% of the projects that have been identified in our turf replacement program in this next year. We've got a few storage projects that we're pursuing, and even, we didn't list it here, but we also received a grant for automatic meter metering, uh, infrastructure, uh, to do a, a pilot test there. Uh, and we anticipate future growth to be, um, much more automatic metering than, than manual metering. Last segment is on our innovative and effective government. Uh, we're gonna continue to set aside reserves. Uh, we are looking at some new revenue generation and I, I, we put that in there, you know, cautiously and respectfully that we're not trying to raise, uh, taxes or fees broadly, but look at opportunities to capture revenues that may be already out there that we're just not capturing or may have leakage. And so we've got, uh, short-term rentals and, and fire service fees as two potential areas to, to consider and look at. Also, um, we've included some of these big-ticket items that kind of run behind the scenes, but our enterprise, uh, resource planning, our ERP project, we're gonna be going live on, um, our systems, um, in this coming year. It's a, it's a really big lift and we'll be very thankful to have that one, um, in the rearview mirror by next year's work plan. We are gonna be completing those elements on charter review. That's a recent conversation council's familiar with. Uh, it's worth noting on our performance audit program, this has been going on, um, over this last fiscal year, but we've got, um, another set of projects that we're gonna pursue in this next fiscal year. Um, we're gonna do a second phase of some work with technology services. We're looking hard at our CIP, our procurement processes, grants management, the space needs that I mentioned earlier, our key performance indicators, and then we're gonna get their support in helping us write several policies where the risk assessment identified we had missing policies. So there's actually a lot of work going on with Moss items behind the scenes. Um, and as these projects and reports become finalized, you'll receive those, um, as a Our, um, vacancies is one of the biggest impacts. Uh, it may not feel as tangible, but if we don't have the folks, um, uh, in the positions to do the work, uh, it doesn't get done. And so we have a pretty lengthy list here of things that we're gonna continue to do to fill our vacancies. We started out, um, I think the, the calendar year at like 250 vacancies and we got down to a point where we're in the 180s and we're getting back up to in the 200s. We're making a lot of progress, but the recent job fair and other things are big, um, impacts to, um, continue to make progress on that. And I would note, one of the most important things we've done to address our recruitment retention is the next item, the, the class and comp study. Uh, we actually have the, the market data back. Um, it, it, it did help to, uh, us to reflect on, um, where there are still gaps, uh, outside of our cost of living adjustments that were made. We're gonna be bringing this information, um, very soon to the personnel committee and, uh, a recommended strategy for where it does make sense to still make some additional considerations. But when you think about the 12 and 15 percent, percent respectively of cost of living adjustments, we're making a lot of progress within that class and comp data. Uh, but there is a few areas that we might continue to look at for additional equity adjustments for those classifications that are the most out of market or the hardest to hire for. That's the next phase that we're looking at. But again, we, we've made a lot of progress with recent, um, compensation adjustments to, um, get, uh, much closer to, um, market competitive, um, rates. Final reflections around just again, just good governance. Uh, we're working hard on our performance management. Uh, we're looking at contracting out of, um, technology services, um, as much as, uh, as reasonable and feasible to continue to make progress in the modernization of our technology systems. And then related, uh, we're doing, um, some work in FIRE to also update some of, um, their core, um, technology tools. Uh, we're gonna continue to be doing work around lean and, and I am careful about that. It's not Six Sigma, it's just lean, um, but it's this continuous improvement, uh, processes that we're training all, uh, staff on as well as just ongoing, uh, work around efficiencies and digital transformation and innovation within the organization. And, um, we, we do think that we have to find new and better ways to deliver services. Um, we think that, that list will grow in, over, uh, the next couple of years. But again, one of those items to do that was recently is to the use of, uh, our library of, um, professional services. And then the last area is mostly around advocacy is that, um, we want to increase our presence. We've, we've done a great job over the last two years of having much more of a presence. We think we can, uh, up that a little bit more with having quarterly visits to Sacramento and keep getting more folks here in Bakersfield. We're also gonna put out an RFP. We've, we put money in the budget to get a federal lobbyist as we've had just a state lobbyist. Um, and, uh, we've increased our, um, streamlining and consistency around grant monitoring, um, a lot more, but we wanna have, uh, a specific, um, centralized approach to that, um, through the city manager's office. And then lastly, um, this is a looming challenge. We don't have a lot of specific details underneath this, but, um, our risk liability rates are crushing our budgets. And so we are going to look for ways to pursue tort reform at the state level. We're gonna have to come back with what some of those specific tasks will be, but we need to start stepping up and getting other cities and other, even private sector folks who are also facing these insurance rates, um, in California. It's just not sustainable and so we're gonna spend some staff time on that because even though it may not feel like an immediate tangible return, if we don't address this in the next five years, our budgets are gonna be really severely impacted. Now, I know this is a lot of information. Um, again, the intent was not to try and get into every detail, but to give you a sense that we have very specific, um, tasks and items in support of each one of the council objectives. Uh, we, and, and this tool will be what myself and the department heads are managing to the expectations. I think it's important, um, to have a plan, as Councilmember Freeman said, is, you know, you, what, what, what you plan and measure is what gets done. And so this, this puts it, um, very plainly for our teams to know what we're asking them to focus on and do. And I would also suggest to the council, um, you know, that for both the community interest and the council interest too, we're trying to stay focused on these specific tasks and items. And as we come up with, you know, sort of new and different ideas that make sense and align and weave in, those could be great, but if it's, um, sort of new and additional on top of these initiatives, we may have to say, that's a great one, we'll put in the work plan for next year. Or hey, if it's a really big emerging issue, we need to make space for that, but what might be the other items that we maybe move down the list, uh, to make space for that, that big new, uh, task? Cause I will say, uh, I think this list is a aggressive list. I think it's doable, but it's very aggressive. This is a lot of work. This is gonna push our team. Um, but I think, uh, we can get at all these items listed here or we wouldn't put it in front of the council, but it, it is gonna be a, a really big lift to try and make progress in all of these areas. It's a, it's a really long, um, list. And so, um, uh, when we think about, um, the, the emerging issues, it, you know, just may have impacts on the timelines and some of these other issues if we have to push them down a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. I'm gonna invite, uh, everybody except our police officers who are standing back there to come and take a seat. Pastor Ruff, there's a seat for you in the front row right here, um, to my right. And the rest of you for safety, fire safety reasons, we just ask that you take your seats now. Well, wait a minute and then once they're seated, Councilmember Corr, go ahead and proceed. Pastor Ruff, there's a seat right there reserved for you. And officers, as people come in, if you could encourage them to take a seat, please, that'd be helpful. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you. I wanna thank city manager Christian Clegg for this document as well as all of our department directors, um, who are here today to really elevate this plan and, uh, just appreciative that we are putting so much work in and really laying a guide forward for, um, the public to also see what kind of goes into accomplishing some of the more, um, kind of larger aspirational priorities of the city council as well as getting specific in some of these categories. As I review it, I feel there might be room for one more category to add which ward this is happening in. I think it'll be helpful to also, as we measure when it's happening, what's happening and who's in charge of it, if we can also add a category of where it's happening. And if it applies citywide to all wards, just indicate that. Um, I think that would be very helpful. I might assume something's happening in Ward Seven and it might not be happening, so I would need to, um, elevate that. So, uh, that would be one help. I, I hope that's one piece of feedback I can provide on this document. Um, otherwise, I, I really appreciate the scope of all of the work that's happening across the different departments. Um, is this a document that will live online somewhere for public reference?
Yes, so, uh, first, this will, this, this says, it's part of the public record, but we'll put it on our website so that it's more visible and, and, and an easy, um, you know, one of our top, you know, documents, um, listed in our, you know, documents list so that people can see it. Uh, now, for, for the staff side on the status updates and the tracking, it's gonna be a living document that won't be updated, you know, uh, every day online, but I think our goal is to be able to put out probably quarterly written reports and probably, um, about at mid-year, come back and do a, a presentation like this to council to say, hey, here's some areas where we've completed it and other areas where it's still pending. And, um, so I, I wanna do that. But then we actually have been in development of a dashboard that was for city council goals that we, that wouldn't again have like, you know, real-time daily, weekly updates, but that it could be a reflection for the community to see how many of our goals of this year's work plan have been now labeled as complete and how many are still pending or, you know, um, open. So we actually hope to, uh, build out that dashboard with this information and make it available to the public, but at a minimum, this document will be available to the public and will have probably quarterly status updates that are written out for the public to see as well.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Uh, I'm gonna accommodate, Mr. Turnipseed, your request as you were not able to see the fine print, so go ahead and come down. Two minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much for the accommodation. Uh, after watching the report, the document is online. I went to print it out and it came out and so small you can't even read it. And that's what I was talking about today. This exact document was on your agenda page, attached to the agenda. So if you're gonna put the same, please make it in a way that people can read it. We appreciate it. And thank you for the fact that you're gonna have a dashboard with accountability and measures so we can see what actual progress is being made and a year from now, see what actually, how much has gotten done and how much hasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say, great job to the city manager and to all the folks who helped prepare this document. Yes, there's a lot of work to do. Yes, uh, there are a lot of issues that we have to address, but we are a growing city. We're a big city and we can do this work. And we can, uh, I'm very confident that we can address most of this, um, this fiscal year and continue to build capacity so that we can do even more in the future because frankly, our community demands it and, uh, the times in which we live in require it. And so it's with that, I would like to make, uh, a motion to receive and file this work plan.
You have a motion, please catch your votes. Priscilla, you're welcome to take a seat, please.
A motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And with that, I don't see any other items on our agenda. We stand adjourned at 5:14.